Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York. I would like to announce at the outset that we will be going into a brief executive session at the end of the first part of our public meeting to discuss personnel matters. We plan to reconvene after the executive session. Would everyone please take a moment to mute your cellphone or BlackBerry? As usual, CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this afternoon's meeting of the Board of Trustees live on cable channel seventy-five. This meeting is also being webcast live and can be accessed by going to www.cuny.edu. The public session of this board meeting will be available as a podcast within twenty-four hours and can be accessed via the CUNY website. I ask that all trustees be especially alert today because if we do our job right, Bob Isaacson might be able to get us one of these.[86.72][86.72](Laughter). This year, Bob Isaacson and his colleagues at CUNY won more Emmys since the golden days of Metro Goldwyn Mayer and Hollywood Studios. Four of these objects came to the City University of New York. So congratulations to Bob and CUNY TV, to John Mogalescu,[111.11][111.11](Applause) and the Office of Academic Affairs for their part in one of these Emmy-winning productions. And congratulations also to J. Cecil B. DeMille, Executive Producer.[131.16][131.16](Laughter). Really quite something. The Chancellor will say a bit more about that achievement a little later. Congratulations to trustee Valerie Beal, who was reappointed by the governor on March 2nd to a seven-year term on our board.[152.16][152.16](Applause). And thank you, as an order, to Vice Chair Phil Berry for agreeing to chair the Ernesto Malavi Leadership Academy Advisory Board. Thank you, Philip.[169.51][169.51](Applause). I want to thank trustee Peter Panteleau for agreeing to chair an ad hoc committee to review the recommendations of Mercer Incorporated regarding CUNY's current executive compensation plan. Trustees Valerie Beal and Joe Loda have agreed to be part of this ad hoc group, which will present its recommendations to me before discussions with the full Board of Trustees and, of course, the Chancellor. I would like to thank trustees Rita DiMartino and Corey Provost, as well as members of the Chancellery, Presidents, Faculty and Students for participating in the Somos El Futuro Conference Weekend in Albany. The CUNY luncheon was very well attended, as was the fourteenth CUNY SUNY Model Senate Session, both of which had a good turnout of elected officials. The Board held its Staten Island Borough hearing on Monday, March fifteenth, two thousand and ten. Trustee Kathleen Pacilli chaired the hearing. That was also attended by trustees Corey Provost and Manfred Philip, members of the Chancellery, and College of Staten Island President Tomas Morales. The Board held its Queens Borough hearing, a public hearing, on the April two thousand and ten Board Calendar on Monday, April nineteenth, two thousand and ten. Vice Chair Philip Berry chaired this hearing. That was also attended by trustees Wellington Chen, Corey Provost, members of the Chancellery, and the Queens College Presidents or their representatives. Summaries of the proceedings of both hearings have been circulated to the trustees and to the Chancellor's Cabinet, and transcripts are available in the Office of the Secretary. The Board will hold its next Borough hearing on Monday, June twenty-first, two thousand and ten, at Hostos Community College in the Bronx. I would like to thank trustee Kathleen Pacilli for representing the Board at a very well-attended CUNY Job Fair this past Friday. Thank you, Kathleen. As I think everyone now knows, President Carolyn Williams has decided to retire from the presidency of Bronx Community College after fourteen years of distinguished service to the college and the university. President Williams, we will have ample opportunity to express our appreciation to you formally, as well as our gratitude for your long and distinguished service to Bronx Community College and the university. But I just want to say now, I know I speak for all members of the Board when I say how grateful we are to you for your leadership for the past fourteen years.[351.13][351.13](Applause). Would you like to say a few words?
Well, I'd just like to say thanks to all of you. It's been a real opportunity and a privilege to serve the university and to provide leadership for the college over the past fourteen years. And we're so proud of what we've been able to accomplish at the college during this time. And I'd like to thank all of you for your help and support in accomplishing what we've been able to. And I'm looking forward to the opening of our new buildings and being certainly in the community and the neighborhood when those buildings open. The Childcare Center, the North Instructional Building, and the Library. Thanks so much, and I'll be around, and more to be said.[411.13][411.13](Applause).
In consultation with the Chancellor, I have appointed the following trustees who have agreed to serve on the search committee for a new president of Bronx Community College. Trustee Frida Foster will serve as Chair. Thank you very much, trustee Foster. Trustees Valerie Beal, Rita DiMartino, Carol Robles-Roman, and Jeffrey Weisenfeld have also agreed to serve as members. Thank you to all of you. President Eduardo Marti will serve as the Presidential Liaison to this committee, and faculty, students, and alumni on the committee will be selected pursuant to the university's It is with great sadness that I note the passing of Mrs. Mary Louise Kelly, a mother of graduate school and University Center President William Kelly. She was just approaching her ninety-second birthday when she died peacefully at her home yesterday. Last, but certainly not least, I'm pleased to inform you that the Baruch College Bearcats became three-time defending conference champions with a ninety-three-eighty-four victory over the number-two-seeded Hunter College Hawks in the two thousand and ten CUNY-AC Con Edison Women's Basketball Championships.[510.13][510.13](Applause). The new men's basketball champions are the second-seeded Brooklyn College Bulldogs, who defeated the top-seeded York College Cardinals, seventy-nine-sixty-eight, in an exciting finals.[529.16][529.16](Applause). May I now call on trustee Valerie Beal to announce college and faculty honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brooklyn College was named to the two thousand and nine President's Higher Education Community Service Honor Roll with distinction by the Corporation for National and Community Service and the recognition for the highest levels of federal government of its commitment to service and civic engagement. Congratulations. Faculty from three CUNY colleges have received prestigious Guggenheim fellowships. They include Abject Professor and Director of the American Social History Project and Center for Media and Learning Joshua Brown of the Graduate School and University Center; Distinguished Professors of History Kimoko Khan of Queens College; and Distinguished Lecturer Colum McCain of Hunter College. Congratulations to all. Distinguished Professor of Italian-American Studies at Queens College Fred Gardafi received a Fulbright Teaching Fellowship; and Assistant Professor of Psychology at Queens College Carolyn P. T. received a two thousand and ten Support of Mentors and Their Students in the Neurosciences Award. Congratulations to both. College of Staten Island CLIP instructor Karen T. Davis was recognized by the New York Times as Outstanding English For-Speakers of Other Language Professionals. The New York Times gave a special acknowledgment to the late LaGuardia Community College Abject Associate Professor Linda Ann Kuntz for her leadership in the adult literacy field. Congratulations. City College Distinguished Professor of Chemical Engineer Sutton Joy Banner-G was elected to the Board of New York Battery and Energy Storage Technology Consortium. Congratulations to them. And finally, Hunter College Professor Ronnie Arcana was one of three professors nationwide to receive a two thousand and nine Excellence in Teaching Award from the American Philological Society. Hunter College Distinguished Professor and two-time Booker Prize winner Patty Carey has two stamps being issued in his honor by his homeland, Australia. Congratulations to both. This concludes my report.
Thanks very much. May I now call on trustee Kathleen Pacilli to announce student and alumni honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Macaulay Honors College at Lehman College alumna Michaela Chase received a Fulbright Grant to pursue research in Nepal. Another Lehman College alumna, Nicole Jean-Patiste, has also received a Fulbright Grant to pursue research in Jamaica. And Lehman College alumnus Elias Alacantara was awarded a prestigious Organization of American States Fellowship for two years of graduate work at the University of Chile. Congratulations to all. Nine Hunter College students have received prestigious awards. In the interest of time, I'd like to mention a few. Sophomore Hedya Reisa Amand was awarded a Barry M. Goldwater Scholarship. Sophomores David Bonilla and Sabrina Ayabarola were awarded Jeanette Watson Fellowships. Macaulay Honors College at Hunter College seniors Joseph Eastman was chosen a New York City Urban Fellow. Senior Joyce Kim was awarded a National Science Foundation Graduate Research Fellowship. And sophomore Vivian Velasare was awarded a National Science Foundation Grant. Congratulations to all of you. CUNY Baccalaureate alumna Sarah Lipick was one of five students nationwide who received a William H. Gates Public Service Law Scholarship to attend the School of Law at the University of Washington. Congratulations. Hostos Community College Radiologic Technology students had a one-hundred percent pass rate on the American Registry of Radiologic Technologists certifying examination for the thirteenth year in a row. That's phenomenal. And Hostos College students have been chosen to participate in the second annual Know Your Hispanic Heritage College Quiz Show. Congratulations to all of you. And finally, Queens College Biology students Emmanuel Dutton and Erica Rodriguez were accepted as Summer Undergraduate Research Fellows at Rockefeller University. And Queens College pre-med student Andre Hillman was named the pre-med student winner of Research Presentation Award, receiving the highest score among both graduate and undergraduate students. Congratulations. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. You have at the table a list of grants and gifts received by the university subsequent to the February twenty-second, two thousand and ten meeting. You'll find copies in the trustee's calendar book as well. May I now call on Chancellor Goldstein to present his report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, we extend our condolences to the family of Bill Kelly. Bill called me earlier today to tell me about the passing of his mother, and certainly our thoughts are with him. Michelle, Dean Michelle Anderson is not with us tonight because she is attending to a family matter in California. President Regina Perugi is attending a memorial service for Jean-Claude. And Jennifer Rab, who will join us later during the meeting, is attending a Middle States effort with the campus schools, and she'll be here shortly. I want to follow up on Chairman Schmidt's. Congratulations to trustee Valerie Beal. It's wonderful to have you with us for another seven years, Valerie, and your work on the Board is truly exemplary, and we look forward to working with you. And Carolyn Williams, for the past ten years, we've worked so close together. She's not only been a wonderful colleague, but a great leader of Bronx Community College, and she has graciously agreed to continue in her role until the time that we appoint a new president. So Carolyn, I thank you for helping out, and we look forward to working with the committee chaired by trustee Frida Foster as we move forward to identify the next president of this important institution. Mr. Chairman, interest in CUNY continues at an extremely high level. As of mid-April, CUNY received more freshman applicants than we had by July fourteenth last year, and last year was a record year as well. Transfer applications continue to run way ahead of schedule, and we are going to take some action because we cannot continue to keep our doors open and work effectively to educate students as they clamor for admission here to the university. So we are putting on some growth targets. We're going to be creating waiting lists for students, opportunities to gain admissions for the spring semester, and we'll do the very best that we can to balance the need to keep the university open and available to those students who wish to study here, but to also do it in a responsible way so that we can educate our students in the way all of us hold dear. Let me just mention a couple of brief things about the status of the state budget. All of you are well aware of what has happened in Albany over the past several months. The legislature is meeting for three days this week. The three leaders, the governor, the New York State Assembly Speaker, and the New York State Senate Majority Leader, are not at all close to addressing the over-nine-billion-dollar deficit. There is agreement on approximately six billion dollars, but the hole continues to be very wide, and we can only speculate as to what the end game is going to be here. And obviously, we are on the phone daily, several times a day, not only with the members of the legislature, but in the executive branch and our office in Albany, to get information as things change. Just to reacquaint you on some of the issues that we face in late March, the Senate and the Assembly each issued their own FY two-eleven budget proposals in response to the governor's executive budget. Just, again, summarizing the positions for the community colleges, the Senate and the Assembly both fully restored the proposed executive base aid reduction of two hundred and eighty-five dollars per FTE student. That resulted in about twenty-two million dollars. For the senior colleges, however, the executive reduction in state aid of eighty-four point four million dollars continues to hold with no relief at this particular juncture with the legislature. Again, of that eighty-four million dollars, about twenty-one million is related to proposed workforce actions to be negotiated with the unions, so that is still a very fluid situation. Senate also recommended fully restoring the funding for CUNY's childcare centers, which the executive had proposed to reduce by about one point four million dollars in federal funding. The Assembly bill calls for partial restoration of that amount of about sixty percent. We all know about the New York State Public Higher Education Empowerment and Investment Act. That was proposed by the executive, and all of you are familiar with our position with respect to that particular bill. The Assembly's bill rejected the act, but the Assembly has publicly stated that these proposals can be taken up after the budget process, so we are still in flux as it relates to that. The Senate proposal included language to increase flexibility on tuition increases, differential tuition rates, and procurement, with some modifications. Senate resolution also added language that requires an accounting mechanism for CUNY to provide need-based aid to cover the TAP gap between future tuition increases and the maximum TAP awards. And the executive proposal to move tuition revenue off the balance sheet or off-budget was rejected by the Senate as well. On the financial aid side, the Senate and the Assembly both rejected the executive proposal to reduce all TAP awards by seventy-five dollars. Obviously, we will continue to watch these developments, but hopefully, some of this will get resolved very quickly, but I'm not too confident about that. On the city side, the mayor's executive budget is due by the end of next week, May sixth. The city's Budget Director Mark Page issued a memorandum on March twenty-third advising CUNY and other city agencies of the need for additional twenty-eleven expense reduction proposals. This exercise, as I have reported before, is part of the mayor's executive budget process and is partially necessitated by potential cuts in state support to the city. CUNY's target is approximately fourteen million dollars for twenty-eleven, which represents about a seven point two percent reduction to our city-funded budget. This cut comes on top of an already fifteen point four million reduction that was proposed in the mayor's FY two-eleven preliminary budget. These targeted letters, I want to underscore, do not imply that the city has made final determinations as to the size of each agency's reduction. Recall that our Maintenance of Effort provision will provide us with some protection against any potential reductions for next year. Obviously, we are in continuing dialogues with City Hall and the Office of Management and Budget. There was a New York City Council Higher Education Committee hearing last week on Wednesday, April twenty-first, regarding childcare services at CUNY. We were well represented by interim Vice Chancellor Peter Jordan, who provided excellent testimony. Other panelists included the university's Director of Childcare and Disability Services, Betty Pierceall; College of Staten Island's President Tomas Morales; Ms. Joan Williams, parent and graduate of New York City College of Technology; and Shanine Williams, a freshman at New York City Tech and daughter of Joan Williams. I thank you all for participating in that testimony. Mr. Chairman, I want to commend Vice Chancellor Ginger Waters on recruiting an absolutely phenomenal Jennifer Rubain to join the CUNY Office of Human Resource Management as Dean of the Office of Recruitment and Diversity effective May seventeenth, two thousand and ten. We've waited for some time for this appointment to be made. Ginger knew how important I felt this appointment was, and I want to congratulate you for doing this. Dean Rubain comes to the central office from Brooklyn College, and I know President Gould is saddened to see her leave, but I have confidence that you will rise to the occasion and find someone to replace her as Director of Compliance and Diversity. Dean Rubain holds an MBA from the Zicklin School of Business and a law degree with an emphasis on employment law from Creighton University. She brings with her broad experience and knowledge of affirmative action, equal opportunity employment, and compliance matters, a deep commitment to workforce diversity and inclusion initiatives, as well as familiarity with CUNY and the way it works. Why I find this appointment so critically important is that we're going to ask Jennifer's first set of responsibilities to coordinate a very comprehensive CUNY diversity study. This initiative will examine all aspects of the university's diversity programs, including how we recruit and retain faculty and staff. It will also identify efforts that can be undertaken to increase the pipeline of diverse candidates for positions at CUNY. This study will build upon data that the university already collects, as well as a review of best practices with the intent of identifying programs, practices, and policies that can be adopted to increase our success rate in growing a diverse workforce. We will work with the Boards Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration, and certainly the Counselor Presidents Committee on Faculty and Administration as well. I'd also like to update you on the status of the new community college. Chronicle of Higher Education, and I believe it is in your list of attachments with the calendar tonight, published an excellent article on the new community college on April eighteenth. I would like to thank Jay Hirschensohn, Mike Arena, John Mogalescu, Tracy Mead, and others who work so effectively with the Chronicle reporter. An ongoing effort is underway to identify a founding president, assisted by Dr. Gussey Kapner, the former president of BMCC, and the former president of Bank Street College. The first meeting to review possible candidates was held this morning, and we hope to have a recommendation to the Board no later than this fall. A search process for eight founding faculty is also underway, with CUNY faculty serving on the five committees that have been organized. Ads appeared in the New York Times, the Chronicle of Higher Education, and other print and electronic outlets in March, and we expect final candidates will be recommended by the committees for final review by Executive Vice Chancellor Lexa Loeb in early July. The initial six majors for the new college are being developed by CUNY faculty. Since last October, over a hundred faculty from around the university have been formally involved in the planning and development, and many others consulted on this project. Last week, or I guess it was last week, maybe it was two weeks ago, I met with Bill Gates Senior, the co-chair of the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, and at a separate meeting with its CEO, Jeff Rakes. The foundation is extraordinarily supportive of CUNY's work and has invited us to submit a proposal, which we will send out tomorrow, is that correct, John, for renewed supplemental funding for planning the new community college? Discussions are ongoing with the mayor's office. I've had several conversations with Mayor Bloomberg about all aspects of the new college, and so far, he's been very deeply supportive of our efforts. We are continuing to search for an initial leased facility in which to open the new college in two thousand and twelve and have a number of possibilities in mind. When I asked interim president Buzz Paswell to assume the position of President of CCNY as we started the process to identify a permanent president, one of the first things he said to me, and maybe he knew that it's because we both have an interest in physics, at least that part of physics that we can both understand, that he wanted to have an all-day symposium before he left office. And I must tell the Board that, boy did he rise to the occasion this last Friday, April twenty-third. A group of very distinguished speakers, including David Gross, who's the Frederick Luck Professor of Theoretical Physics and Director of the Kavli Institute for Theoretical Physics from the University of California at Santa Barbara, was one of the speakers; Anton Zeilinger, professor of physics at the University of Vienna; and the scientific director of the Institute of Quantum Optics and Quantum Director of the Institute of Quantum Optics and Quantum Information of the Austrian Academy of Sciences; P. Leslie Dutton, the Eldridge Reeves Johnson Professor of Biochemistry and Biophysics at the University of Pennsylvania, and the Director of the Johnson Foundation for Molecular Physics; and Alan Guth, the Victor Weiscop Professor of Physics at the Massachusetts Institute of Technology, all were some of the luminaries. The brain power in that room all day Friday was quite daunting, and I must say, Buzz, the speech, the talk that Alan Guth gave was, to me, very inspiring. For those of you who don't know this, our Vice Chancellor, our Senior Vice Chancellor, Mark Shaw's son, Michael, was a student at MIT. He's now finishing up a PhD at Caltech. And Mark told me that Michael's most impressive faculty member was Alan Guth. I went over and I said to Alan, "Do you remember Michael Shaw?" And he said, "One of the best students I ever had." So, Mark, I'm sure you felt very good about that. And again, Bill, Buzz, very consistent with our emphasis in the decade of science, and really, kudos to you and your staff for pulling off such a stellar day of significant people, and so many CUNY faculty and students were there, and we really raised the flag in a way that we haven't seen in this area in some time. We always spend a lot of time at these board meetings complimenting Jay Hirschenson, and he certainly deserves it. And let me add yet another compliment, and I think I have three of them, but Jay, so just calm down and don't get too bloated over this. Today is the 8th Annual CUNY Daily New Citizenship Now event. This was a brainchild of Jay. Is he all right? He's not going into, he's not fibulating or anything? Okay. Jay mentioned this to me eight years ago, and I said, "It sounds great," and I really didn't think it was going to turn out to be a big deal. But since the callin' began, over 75,000 people have been helped with advice that they could not receive because they don't have the financial wherewithal to really pay for the services, no less to migrate through the various regulatory bodies. So this is a great day again for CUNY, showing it to be the people's university in this city, and making it easier for new people who are seeking immigration advice to get it through a parade of very, very influential and smart and dedicated and highly skilled people. Today, Senator Gillibrand was there. She got on the phone to call me. I was in the office while she was making phone calls and said, "Chancellor, I just want to tell you how impressed I am by this effort." Governor Patterson was there, Mayor Bloomberg will be there on Wednesday, I'll be there with him, City Council Speaker Christine Quinn, Borough President Stringer, Markowitz and Diaz, and the beat goes on. So Jay, congratulations, another wonderful effort on behalf of people in the city. We couldn't have done it without you, and I think he deserves our collective applause for this. Do you want to say something? Oh, and Alan Wernick. Alan Wernick is Jay behind the curtain. Alan is an immigration, an attorney, and I'll tell you, he works every weekend, going around the city, helping organize events. And Alan is a great, great citizen of this university and someone that is really an important part of this administration. We had the 2010 Big Apple Job Fair last Friday at the Jacob Javits Center. Ken Adams, the President and CEO of the Business Council of New York State, gave a great speech. Over 88 employers and approximately 5,000 prospective applicants were served on that important day. You heard about the prestigious recognition that we received on April 18th, winning four Emmy Awards presented by the New York Chapter of the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences. Jay, again, is behind the scenes, being the marionette here, orchestrating all of this. Bob Isaacson, congratulations again. I predicted four, but that's all I did, was predict four, and it happened to be the case. We received two Emmys for the Best Magazine Series and Political Historical Segment of Nueva York, our uniquely successful Spanish-language magazine show, launched originally as a result of inspiration by trustee Ugo Morales. So, thank you, Ugo. Two Emmys were also awarded for extraordinary work done by the CUNY's Office of Academic Affairs for the Office of the Mayor and WNYC TV on an ESL series called "We Are New York." And John Mogalescu was the driving force behind that, along with Leslie Oppenheimer, who's the university Director of Language and Literacy. Mr. Chairman, I'm almost done. Two additional things. I'd like to congratulate Ostos Community College President Felix Matos Rodriguez on his election to the Board of Directors of the American Council on Education. Congratulations to President Jeremy Travis for receiving a Public Service Award from the School of Criminal Justice at SUNY, and I'm done.
Are there questions for the Chancellor on his report? What do you think the chances are of an Emmy for the trustees live at CUNY? Best reality TV.
I would do that, Mr. Chairman, but Jay will ask me for more budget, so I'd have to think about this.
Any questions for the Chancellor, comments? All right, we'll turn now to items that require a vote. I would like to move the adoption of the Chancellor's University Report for April 26, 2010. The copies of the Chancellor's University Report are on the table. I would like to draw your attention to three items recently added to the report. The first two are appointments to the Executive Compensation Plan. They are the appointment of Jennifer S. Rubain as Dean of the Office of Recruitment and Diversity at the Central Office. And the second appointment is that of Daniel Lemon as Acting Provost and Senior Vice President of Academic Affairs at the City College of New York. The third change in the report is an error that we're revising correctly, a gift resolution for Queensborough Community College in the report. So with those three added items, may I have a second on the adoption of the University Report?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, abstentions? University Report is approved. Next, I call your attention to the very lengthy minutes of the regular board meeting and executive session of February 22nd, 2010. You have a copy of the minutes in your meeting books. May I have a second for the adoption of the minutes? Any revisions, comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? The minutes are adopted. Now we'll turn to the reports of our committees. We'll call first on the Committee on Fiscal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Fiscal Affairs met on April 7, 2010, and approved the following resolutions. Calendar Item 3A is a resolution to authorize Hunter College to implement an increase in dormitory fees beginning in the fall of 2010. Dormitory fees will increase 33% by way of a two-step increase, 16.5% in fall of 2010, and additional 16.5% effective spring 2011. In fall 2011, Hunter will begin raising dormitory fees incrementally by an amount equal to the average of the trailing five-year HEV rate. The fee increase is needed to maintain the condition of the dormitory complex, and the implementation of the annual rate increase will ensure that the dormitory funding will be maintained at adequate levels. The Hunter College dormitory has been and continues to be a highly desirable feature and recruitment tool for the college. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of Calendar Item 3A.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any questions for the committee, comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? That carries.
Mr. Chairman, I present Items 3B and 3C together. Calendar Item 3B is a resolution to authorize the General Council to execute a license agreement for online access to electronic journals from the Wiley subscription service on behalf of the university. The contract will be awarded as a sole source pursuant to regulations and applicable law. The total amount of the five-year license agreement is approximately $4.8 million, payable in five installments. Online access to the full-text journals and various college collections being purchased from Wiley will be available to all faculty and students university-wide. Calendar Item 3C is a resolution to authorize the General Council to execute a license agreement for online access to the Science Direct Electronic Collection of Full-Text Science, Technology, Medicine, and Social Science Journals from Elsever BV on behalf of the university. The contract shall be awarded as a sole source pursuant to regulations and applicable law. The total amount of the five-year license agreement is approximately $8.3 million, payable in five annual installments. Online access to the full-text journals will be available to all university faculty and students. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of Calendar Items 3B and 3C.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions about these two items? Professor Phillip?
Just a comment. I think everybody should be aware how important these licenses for electronic resources are for this university, and that it's a five-year term, that it won't stop at the beginning of any particular academic year. Thank you.
Other comments? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Those two items carry.
Calendar Item 3D is a resolution to authorize the General Council to execute an amendment to the agreement with ACT Inc. on behalf of the university to provide funding for testing services through June 30th, 2010. Such funding shall not exceed the total estimated cost of $725,000. ACT provides testing services to the university to support high-volume assessments in excess of 100,000 test administrations annually of student college readiness in areas of reading, writing, and math. Tests are used both for initial placement for college credit or remedial courses and for the exit from the remedial programs. The amendment adds funds for fiscal year 2009, 10 for its services. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of Calendar Item 3D.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? That carries.
Mr. Chairman, the Investment Subcommittee met on March 24th, 2010, and approved what is presented as Calendar Item 3E, an amendment to the university's investment policy adopted in December 2008. This amendment was included as an addendum to the agenda of the Fiscal Affairs Committee of April 7, 2010, and reads as follows. "Resolved that the Board of Trustees approve an amendment to the university's investment policy adopted in December 2008, revising the asset allocation as follows. The total asset allocation for marketable alternatives has changed from 5% to 10%, and the target allocation for non-marketable alternatives has changed from 10% to 5%." Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of Calendar Item 3E.
Thank you. I'll second that. Are there questions on the investment policy? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions? That carries.
Following the approval of the action items by the committee, Associate Vice Chancellor Matthew Sapienza gave an update on the 2011 state and city budgets. In addition, Mr. Chairman, University Chief Investment Officer Janet Krone gave an investment report and an update of our investment portfolio, followed by University Controller Barry Kaufman, who introduced representatives of the independent auditing firm of KPMG, who reported on the university's 2009 A133 and internal control reports. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research. May I call on trustee Wellington Chan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At its 87th meeting, the committee approved free policy matters. Policy Calendar Number 4A, revised procedures for handling student complaints about faculty conduct in academic settings. This is a set of minor amendments concerning the existing student complaint procedures as adopted by the Board of Trustees in February 2007. The revised text clarifies the conditions under which department chair may recuse him or herself from the investigation for good cause. The revised text also specifies that only students in faculty's class or other formal academic setting may initiate a complaint. Calendar Number 4B, Baruch College MA in Mental Health Counseling. This professional graduate program leads to mental health counseling licensure in the state of New York. It follows previous board approval of several comparable programs at other senior colleges in response to the introduction of licensing requirement by the New York State Education Department in 2002. Calendar Number 4C, LaGuardia Community College, AS in Biology. This program provides students with the first two years of science education, combined with laboratory research experience, preparing for transfer to upper-division courses in biology at a senior college. Mr. Chairman, Items 4A through 4C were approved by the committee and recommend their approval by the board.
Thank you. May I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you. Questions for the committee? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Those three items carry.
Information Item. Executive Vice Chancellor Alexander Loeb reported to the trustees on enrollment projections for the next academic year and the strategy for addressing the ongoing increases of new freshmen and transfer student applications. In order to maintain quality and not grow too quickly, we will soon cease accepting applications for Fall 2010 at all of the colleges, but will institute a waiting list and/or open up Spring 2011 applications in order to maintain access as much as possible. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. May I call on trustee Valerie Beal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Board Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration met on April 7, 2010 to consider a number of items which we now present to the Board for approval. In addition, there is an appointment above the level of Vice President at the City College of New York, which was not completed in time for the committee's approval on April 7th, but was subsequently reviewed by the committee members and has been provided to the Board as a table item at the Chancellor's University Report in order to expedite its implementation. The regular calendar items are as follows. Item 5A concerns the reappointment of a sitting commissioner of the Civil Service Commission of the City University of New York. The CUNY Civil Service Commission was established in 1988 to oversee all civil service operations by the university. The commission is comprised of three members appointed by the Chancellor with the consent of the Board of Trustees, each of whom serve for a term of six years. This resolution authorizes the Chancellor to reappoint Ms. Elaine Reese, whose current term expires on May 31st, 2010, for an additional six-year term commencing June 1st, 2010 through May 31st, 2016. Mr. Chair, I move the approval and adoption of Item 5A.
May I have a second? Questions on the item? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? 5A carries.
Thank you. Items 5B contained to changes in the governance plan of the Graduate Center with regard to the School of Professional Studies. The revisions authorize the SPS Council to establish an Academic Appeals Committee and a student governance body in accordance with university bylaws and board policy. Delete the provision prohibiting SPC from offering degree programs that are the same as those currently offered by other CUNY colleges, and delete the requirement that revenue generated by SPS be used to support doctoral students. The committee approved the proposed governance plan, but directed the General Council to consult further with the faculty trustee to consider revisions he might suggest to improve the plan. That consultation took place, and the proposed governing plan before the Board reflects several changes that were agreed upon. Mr. Schaefer will briefly describe those changes.
The changes are...
The changes are as follows. First, it authorizes the School of Professional Studies to establish an academic appeals committee and a student government body in accordance with the bylaws and policies of the Board of Trustees. This corrected an oversight in the original governance plan. Second, the proposed amendments delete the provision prohibiting the School of Professional Studies from offering degree programs other than online programs that are the same as those currently offered by another CUNY college. That provision was unique to the School of Professional Studies and does not apply to any other college or school within CUNY. Finally, the proposed amendments delete the provision that revenue generated by the school shall be used for doctoral support to the extent possible. Since the creation of the school, the chancellor has established a major program for the support of doctoral students, making that provision unnecessary.
All right.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I move item five, for the approval and adoption of item five B.
Thank you very much. May I have a second? Any comments or questions about the governance plan changes? Then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Five B carries.
Item five C involves amendments to the governance plan of Lehman College to address quorum issues. It redefines the membership of the college council as an absolute number of 102 rather than being comprised of proportional numbers of faculty, students, and administrators. Mr. Chair, I move the approval and adoption of item five C.
Thank you very much. May I have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Five C carries.
Item five D involves amendments to the governance plan of Bronx Community College, also with regard to composition and quorum. The revisions define quorum as a majority of the Senate calculated as a percentage of the total number of seats eligible to be filled. It also allows alternates to fill temporary vacancies. Mr. Chair, I move the approval and adoption of item five D.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions about five D? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Five D carries.
Item five E involves amendments to the governance plan of the Borough Manhattan Community College to revise and clarify the provisions regarding eligibility and term of office for college lab technicians and part-time teaching adjuncts and for faculty participation. Mr. Chair, I move the approval and adoption of item five E.
I'll second that. Are there any questions on five E? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Five E carries.
Item five F names the Lonza Family Medical Simulation Lab at Borough Manhattan Community College in response to a monetary gift of $216,000. Mr. Chair, I move the approval and adoption of item five F.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Questions? All in favor say aye. Opposed, abstentions? That carries.
Item five G names the Herbert Kurtz Class of 41 Chair in Constitutional Rights at Brooklyn College in response to a gift from the Kurtz Family Foundation in the amount of $1,700,000. Mr. Chair, I move the approval and adoption of item five G.
I'll second that one. Are there questions on this one? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Let's approve.
Mr. Chair, item five H establishes the McCauley Honors College as a formal entity within the Graduate Center with its own governance plan and allows the college to offer undergraduate degrees in concert with other CUNY campuses. Mr. Chair, I move the approval and adoption of item five H.
Thank you very much. I'll second that. Are there comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? That carries.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chair, I would just like to take this opportunity to personally thank President Carolyn Williams because Miss, President Williams is the reason that I know anything about the City University of New York. And so, on her behalf, I would, well, maybe the university may not be that happy, but thank you for introducing me to CUNY and congratulations on your appointed, your announced retirement. And, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. Like to call on trustee Frida Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Board of Trustees Committee on Facilities Planning and Management considered six items at its meeting on April 7th, 2010. These action items are listed in this board meeting as calendar items six A through F. Item A, Baruch College, CM build contract for renovations at 17 Lexington Avenue Field Building. Resolution to authorize the CUCF to execute a CM build contract with Lero Program and Construction Management on behalf of Baruch College for Phase One renovations to the field building at 17 Lexington Avenue. The field building at 17 Lexington Avenue, built in 1929, will undergo much-needed renovations to infrastructure and programming in order to meet the college's current and projected needs. Phase One renovations will include full renovation of four entire floors plus building-wide renovations of space use and layout. Item B, Brooklyn College, amendment to prior resolution adopted November 27, 2006, calendar item number four C, authorizing the acceptance of a gift from the Brooklyn College Foundation and the execution of a consultant contract with Pfeiffer Partners for a new performing arts center at Brooklyn College. This amendment reflects a $2.5 million increase in the total gift to $7.5 million, and an increase to, in the amount of the consultant contract from approximately $3.6 million to approximately $6.8 million. In 2006, the board approved acceptance of a $5 million gift from the Brooklyn College Foundation to help fund a new performing arts center. The initial design situated this new building between Gershwin and Whitman Theater wings, but the discovery of a sewer main beneath the proposed site required redefining the site and the building program. The additional costs resulting from this reprogramming and redesign will be funded in part by an additional gift from the foundation of $2.5 million, which brings the total gift to $7.5 million. Item C, College of Staten Island Master Plan Amendment. This amends the college's 1986 master plan to adjust for growing enrollment and to allow for the planning of renovations and new construction as required to accommodate this growth. We have prepared a brief presentation by Bill McIntosh of Cooper Robinson and Partners, our consultants on the College of Staten Island Master Plan. There are handouts included in your packets. Item D, Queens College, Rosenthal Hall renovation. Resolution to authorize a construction contract on behalf of Queen, of Queens College for design and construction-related services for Phase One of the Rosenthal Library renovation. Rosenthal Hall is a 20-year-old, and is 20 years old and in need of major and minor upgrades to accommodate the current needs of the college. Phase One will include upgrades to the main circulation desk, installation of additional student workstations and computers in the general study areas, installation of additional HVAC, IT, and electrical services, and the building of an enhanced print copy center and a new smart classroom. Item E, Mega Everest College, building operation and management services for the new School of Science, Health, and Technology. Resolution to authorize a consultant contract on behalf of Mega Everest College for building operation and management services at the new School of Science, Health, and Technology. A new seven-story building will house the college's School of Science, Health, and Technology and is scheduled to be in full use by June 2010. To optimize the initial maintenance and management of this new building, the college would engage a building management consultant service to oversee the day-to-day management of the building systems, oversee regularly scheduled preventative and, and emergency maintenance, and train the appropriate college staff to assume the building management tasks at the completion of the contract. The initial contract will be for three years with an option to terminate after one. Item F, Queens College Electrical Distribution Upgrades. Resolution to authorize a consultant contract with AKF Engineers LLP on behalf of Mega Everest College for campus-wide electrical distribution system upgrades for an amount not to exceed $1 million. This resolution replaces, at significant savings to CUNY, the resolution adopted in June, in January 2010 with another firm whose fee could not be negotiated to a level acceptable to CUNY. The college has experienced campus-wide power outages for a number of years affecting the heating plant, gym, dining hall, and School of Music, and Jefferson Hall, which houses administrative offices, admissions, registrar, bursar, financial aid, security, and some academic departments. Campus-wide upgrades to the electrical distribution systems to modernize and increase capacity will include installing a new substation, replacing the duct bank, upsizing the transformers, and replacing the switchboards in the affected buildings. The consulting firm initially selected for this project, approved by resolution, a resolution adopted January 25th, 2010, could not in end, in the end negotiate its fees to a level acceptable to CUNY. This resolution will replace the prior resolution and authorize a consultant contract at significant savings with another engineering firm, AKF Engineers LLP. I hereby request your approval of these calendar items, and this concludes the report of the chair.
Thank you very much. You have the motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions on any of these six items for the committee? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Those matters all carry. Thank you very much for that report. I would like to move the award of the honorary degrees that are set out in section one of your board book. May I have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments on the honorary degrees? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? The honorary degrees carry. I would also like to move the award of the SOC scholarships. Item number eight in your, in your calendar book. You can see the recipients there. May I have a second on the SOC scholarships?
Okay.
Questions? Comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? SOC scholarships are approved. That concludes this portion of our public meeting. We're going to go into a brief executive session, following which we will reconvene in public session. I would like to call this public session of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York to order. We have, we have three matters to, to discuss. I'd like first to turn to trustee Charles Shorter.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to present the resolution to the full board for approval. And I suppose I'm supposed to be composed and unemotional, but I certainly cannot be. The resolution is that Lisa Stiano Coico be designated President of the City College of New York effective August 2nd, not, 2010, at a compensation to be recommended by the chancellor to the board, subject to financial availability. That is the resolution. By way of explanation, the search committee chaired by trustee Charles Shorter. Supported by a number of other trustees who had many comments to make over the weeks. At the conclusion of an extensive national search, over 100 applicants for this position, we recommended four finalists to the city, for the City College Presidency, and the chancellor is recommending Lisa Stiano Coico as president. She is currently the provost and executive vice president for Academic Affairs at Temple University. She was previously the Rebecca Q. and James C. Morgan Dean College of Human Ecology of Cornell University. Prior to that, she was Senior Associate Dean for Research and Vice Provost for Medical and External Affairs at the Joan and Sanford Wile Medical College of Cornell University. Dr. Stiano Coico, who holds a BS with honors in Biology from Brooklyn College and a PhD in Microbiology and Immunology from the Cornell Graduate School of Medicine Sciences, has held a wide range of academic appointments, including professor of Surgery, professor of Microbiology and Surgery, professor of Microbiology and Dermatology, professor of Public Health, professor of Nutritional Sciences, and professor of Fiber, Fiber Science and Apparel Design. Her current research is in the area of alcohol and drug abuse prevention among traditional college-age students. I will also say that the committee was most enthusiastic about her candidacy.
Thank you very much. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there comments or questions about this appointment? Not? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Welcome, Dr. Lisa.
Thank you so much. Oh, I'm thrilled. I'm humbled. I'm so happy to be coming back to my CUNY roots. It is just an absolute thrill. I am so honored. I cannot thank you enough. I cannot thank you as trustees. Thank Chancellor Goldstein, the incredible faculty administrative staff at City College, and the amazing students at City College, and the alumni and community partners. It's just a wonderful, wonderful time in my life. The first time I stepped foot on the City College campus this year to meet with faculty and the students. I was so impressed. The students at City College are fantastic. They walk with this sense of purpose. They're at it, they're at City College to take hold of their own education, to take hold of making a difference in their world, but with a valued commitment of paying it forward and making a difference in the world, to come and to make a difference in the lives of their families, their community, their friends. This is an absolutely wonderful, wonderful college. The students, I'm very, very deeply committed to the whole issue of access. And access, no matter what your economic status, access to a world-class education. I received access to a world- I received access to a world-class education at CUNY. It made me who I am. It sparked my passion for science. It made me want to give back to my community, and that's what I want to continue to foster and instill in the City College campus and the City College community. But, in this day and age, what is so exciting about the City College campus, it's not enough to give just access. You need to afford the opportunities for success, and in this 21st century, that means having our students work side by side with peers and with faculty working at the cutting edge of discovery and leadership and knowledge in their fields, whatever that field may be. It could be the arts and music and a composer, it could be creative writing, it could be journalism, it could be science and engineering. The decade of science at CUNY is so critical, so absolutely vital to the success of our students all throughout the CUNY campus. And City College is very lucky because it stands on the shoulders of absolutely stupendous faculty, all of the faculty. The faculty that I've met with in every field have been phenomenal, and not only that, the science and the decade of science and the science that's going on at CUNY and at City College will give the City College students and all CUNY students at all levels, graduate, undergraduate, an unbelievable opportunity to take their places in this world of high technology. It is just a phenomenal opportunity and so important, and as a scientist, I can tell you, it's just really phenomenal to be part of watching the trajectory continue to grow throughout CUNY and City College. Not only the faculty, the staff, the students, but the alumni. The alumni of CUNY as a whole, and I'm one of those alumni, and the alumni of City College are just fantastic. I look forward to having stimulating and exciting dialogues, conversations, debates about the challenges and the opportunities at City College. It's going to be great, great fun, and I also truly want to reach out to increase and strengthen the partnerships with our community neighbors in the surrounding areas. As students, as community members, as faculty, as they walk through the gates that are always open on Convent Avenue, I know that they will see a vibrant, exciting campus that just continues to grow its trajectory and is a wonderful opportunity. Again, thank you, thank you, thank you for giving me this tremendous opportunity. I am thrilled. I have always gone by Dean Lisa, Provost Lisa, and I hope the students, faculty, staff, and administrators will know me as President Lisa, and it will be just fun. I am thrilled, and I can't wait to take on this exciting opportunity, and I look forward to the future with all excitement. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, and I also must thank my incredible family who have supported me through my entire career and my life. So Jenny, John, Richard, thank you, and just, I can't wait, I can't wait to be here, so thank you.
Finally got some enthusiasm. Thank you very much. I'd like now to turn to trustee Frida Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to present and move the following two resolutions to the board for approval. First, that the Board of Trustees and the City University of New York approve the purchase of an apartment for the president of Baruch College and authorize the General Counsel to execute a contract of sale and related documents to effect said purchase of condominium unit number 5D located at 120 East 29th Street in Manhattan. The contract of sale and related documents shall be subject to approval as to form by the university office of the General Counsel. The second, that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the purchase of an apartment for the president of Meger Everest College and authorizes the General Counsel to execute a contract of sale and related documents to effect said purchase of condominium apartment unit number 22D located at One Handsome Place in Brooklyn. The contract of sale and related documents shall be subject to approval as to form by the university office of the General Counsel.
Thank you very much. May I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions, comments on these two resolutions? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, those resolutions carry. That concludes the business before this public meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment?
Please.
I'd like to say first thing, two, three things. On behalf of the faculty, I'd like to welcome Dr. Stiano Coico to this university. City College is one of the jewels, if not the jewel of our system, and we look forward to working with you. The second thing I'd like to say is to express some appreciation to Dr. Robert Pazwell, who has been serving with distinction as the interim president, and I'd like to see a round of applause for Dr. Pazwell. And the third and last thing I'd like to say is that the university faculty senate elections will take place before the next meeting of the Board of Trustees. I am term limited, and since my position here derives from my position as Chair of the university faculty senate, I will not be at the next meeting, and I have to say that I've looked, I have appreciated these meetings at this Board of Trustees, and I will miss being here at the next one. Thank you.
I'm not going to try not to respond to these two matters extemporaneously. We'll have resolutions in June, both for Dr. Pazwell and for E. Manford, expressing our appreciation, and I know all the trustees look forward to the June meeting for that reason as well as others. I believe that concludes our public business, and we're adjourned.